Evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Saginaw City Council. Tonight, we will be led in prayer and pledge by Councilmember Michael Balls.
Can you bow your heads, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry, y'all. It's been feeling that way every time I think about something and who's leading and all that kind of stuff. It kind of messed me up there.
Well, you can still say a prayer.
All right. I'll give my heads now and then. In the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful, praise be to God, the Lord of the worlds, the most gracious, the most merciful, master of the day of judgment. This you we worship, when you we call for help. Guide this city council on the straight path, the path of those whom you have blessed and none of those against whom you is angry and nor those are misguided. Amen.
Amen. Have a seat, everybody. Madam Clerk, are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryan is excused. Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore is excused. Councilmember Scherzer. Present. Councilmember Millen.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostasch.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
We have seven members present and two excused.
Very good. All right. Good evening, everybody. This is a public meeting, so we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, I remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices. I have to take my own advice right now. If you haven't done it, please do so. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple announcements tonight. The consent agenda item number six has been revised, and it states now that it's a three-year agreement rather than a one-year. Also, our Halloween trick-or-treat hours are 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday, October 31st. And daylight savings time will be effective Sunday, November 3rd. Remember to turn your clocks back one hour. Next, we have certificate of recognition for Samuel Cole in obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout.
And our councilmember Michael Balls will be reading that proclamation.
Samuel Cole is here, isn't he? Can you tell him to come to the podium, please? The City of Saginaw Certificate of Recognition presented to Samuel Cole, Boy Scout Troop 304. Whereas Samuel Cole, a member of the Boy Scout Troop 304, has earned the highest rank of Eagle Scout within the Boy Scouts of America, agreeing to most young men in scouting; and whereas we recognize the hard work and determination to go to achieving this highly coveted position, the many service hours contributed outstanding leadership demonstrated by Samuel to attain this status; and whereas the scouting program major objectives are to develop citizenship, active volunteerism, leadership, Samuel has demonstrated these attributes by volunteering countless hours on his Eagle Scout project at the Sprechtum Autism Center. As the Outdoor Ethics Coordinator, Samuel has also participated in numerous community projects, including preparing Ojibwe Island for the July 4th festivals. And whereas Samuel has served the Boy Scouts in exemplary manner and deserving of the honor bestowed upon him, he serves as an example to the youth through his high level of personal achievement, leadership, and community service. Now therefore be resolved that Floyd Clark, the mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of federal councilmembers, does hereby extend to Samuel our sincere congratulations for having achieved the status of Eagle Scout. Further, we hereby urge all citizens of the City of Saginaw to recognize, honor, and celebrate the outstanding contributions committed to Samuel Cole has made to the City of Saginaw. It is witness therefore I have unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 21st day of October in the year of our Lord until 2019. Floyd Clark, councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Ford, John Mims, Bill Ostasch, and Autumn Schwertz, Timothy Morales, City Manager. Thank you.
Hard work.
Congratulations.
It was quite a challenge, but congratulations.
Bye, honey.
If you'd like, you can say a few words, or maybe Mom and Dad would like to. Please step back to the podium, and we'd love to hear from you. This is a great achievement, so why don't you tell us a little bit about it?
Thank you. I don't really, I didn't think about what to say at all.
That's okay. Thank you. All right.
Mayor, we have another certificate of recognition tonight, and it's for Derek Donald Jr. in obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout.
Derek, if you'll step forward as well. And again, councilmember Balls will be reading the certificate.
I must admit, it's more than an honor for me to be able to read this certificate to Derek. He just happened to be my daughter-in-law's nephew, and that's my daughter-in-law's sister right there, too, so I've been knowing Derek for a long time, and I'm more than any related to read this proclamation for you, Derek. The City of Saginaw Certificate of Recognition presented to Derek D. Donald Jr., Boy Scout Troop 304. Whereas Derek Donald Jr., a member of the Boy Scout Troop 304, has the highest rank of Eagle Scout within the Boy Scouts of America, agreeing to most young men in scouting; and whereas we recognize the hard work and determination to go into achieving this highly coveted position, the many service hours contributed and outstanding leadership demonstrated by Derek to attain this status; and whereas the scouting program major objectives are to develop citizenship, active volunteerism, and leadership skills, Derek has demonstrated these attributes by volunteering countless hours on his Eagle Service project of remodeling and refurnishing the playroom at the City Rescue Mission of Saginaw. In addition to raising the funds completed, and whereas Derek has been a member of the Boy Scouts since 2015, earning a total of 31 merit badges, a gold, the bronze eagle pomf, and is a Brotherhood Member of the Order of the Arrow, Scouting National Honor Society; and whereas Derek has served the Boy Scouts in exemplary manner and deserving of the honor bestowed upon him, he serves as an example to the young, the youth through his high level of personal achievement, leadership, and community service. Now therefore be resolved that Floyd Clark, the mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of the fellow city councilmembers, does hereby extend to Derek our sincere congratulations for achieving the status of Eagle Scout. Further, we hereby urge all citizens of Saginaw to recognize, honor, and celebrate the outstanding contributions and commitment that Derek Donald has made to the City of Saginaw. It is witness herefore I have unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 21st day of October in the year of our Lord, 2019. Floyd Clark, Mayor, councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Ford, John Mims, Bill Ostasch, and Autumn Schwertz, Timothy Morales, the City of Saginaw City Manager. Please come and get to you.
Congratulations. That's a great accomplishment. Just now, you've got more to do. Likewise, we'd love to hear from you if you would like to say a few words.
I just want to thank, I'd only like to thank all of you for giving me this. I feel like I really came a long way scouting, and I just like, thank you, and my mom right behind me.
Very well.
Mayor, our next order of business is public input.
All right. Welcome to all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Hearing from the public and the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly, so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, let us know if you'll be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council, so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to the city staff. Thank you.
Our first speaker is Mary McCulick.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Second time around. Did you start it? I ran out of time last time. Did you already start it?
Yes.
Oh, shoot. Okay. So, let's make this quick. On behalf of the citizens in Saginaw, stop the recycling as of July 1st for glass and any plastics, 3 through 6. But I'll deal with plastics later. Let's get to glass. Glass is one of the easiest recyclables. It's like 95%, 100% recyclable. Normal glass is made out of liquid sand. It reduces the use. It's very, to make regular glass from sand, it takes a lot of energy. Furnace heat, very hot. It's hot in here today, too, as reminding me. You reduce carbon, as far as the carbon dioxide, CO2, released by 5% for every 10% of glass making by cullet, which is the broken glass, the recycled glass, versus the liquid sand. And also reduce the heat by 3%. And this is per an article through the engineering, gosh, chemical and engineering journal from February 2019. So I have, as far as we here, I'm trying to get this all in, I'm sorry if I'm kind of running it together. The U.S. only recycles 33% versus, let's say, for instance, Switzerland and Germany. And our biggest culprit, per this article, said government policy was a big thing and consumer education. One thing, our Michigan, we're only 15%. We're aiming to get up to 30%. 2025, we should have urban glass sites. If we don't have curbside pickup, we should at least have sites available at a closer range. And then by 2030, it says, per Michigan, the law that I read and what they're reviewing here and the state level, we should have it in the rural areas also by 2030. So if we're not going to pick up curbside, maybe we could have drop-off sites. And then also, it's going to also offer an opportunity to generate jobs if we decide to do, you know, recycling here at a closer area versus going down to Ohio. I mentioned earlier about piggybacking and going down to Ohio. But maybe if we could start some grassroots recycling centers here, because it saves a lot in the long run, and it's easy to recycle. So that is my push today here, is trying to reverse that stance where they said because of money, we're going to just put it in the landfill, which doesn't readily decompose for just thousands and thousands and thousands of years, where we could just utilize that and put some people to work and decrease our CO2 emissions. So, thank you for listening, and I hope I have your consideration.
Thank you.
Next, we have Billy Collins.
Welcome.
Hi. My concern today is the acts about park, because I had an incident that happened to me in the summertime, and I didn't feel like it was fair. Let me see where I'm going to start, because I've only got three minutes. On July 28th, I was using the park for just enjoyment. Me and my daughter, we built this go-kart, and we took it out to park to test it out. And while we was doing that, we had the cops called on us. And like I said, we wasn't doing nothing wrong, and I was trying to see if, can they ask the city, can they build a park or consider somewhere where a guy can take his kid to ride the go-kart without being harassed by the police? Is there any way or any idea?
We can't be, this is not a question-and-answer period. Your request will be referred to staff.
Okay.
Is that your entirety, or you have more?
That's basically it, that I feel like my rights was violated that day, when I was just simply letting my daughter enjoy a Christmas toy. It don't seem like we should have had the cops called on this. But it was two guys that made a police report. They said we did something wrong. I don't, we was convicted of a crime, we was told to leave and everything, you know. Our whole day was ruined, for we didn't do nothing wrong. So I need, you know, could you help, you know, find some answers where?
We will refer that to the manager to respond.
Okay. Okay, so this park issue thing, can we get somewhere where a guy can take their person?
You keep asking us questions. We can't answer your questions. You don't have answers. That's what the staff will investigate and respond to.
Okay. So who do I ask that question to?
You are asking it right now, and I'm referring it to the manager and his staff.
Oh, okay. Oh, is you? Oh, okay. Timothy Morales.
He is our city manager.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So I know.
And our final speaker tonight is Salima Nan.
Ms. Nan?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that welcome, Honorable City Manager and Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Salima Nan, and today I'm speaking for myself, and today I'm coming, I'm very optimistic about our state. I'm very optimistic. And my optimism is shared, or has grown because of my meeting with some of our elected leaders. One is Jacqueline Benson, who is the Secretary of State. I've had some experience with the office going over there now, and it's a lot better than what it was before. I've also met last week with Donna Nessel, who is the Attorney General, and we all should meet her. She's a wonderful person, very dedicated. And each one of these women that I'm going to talk about, including the mayor, I'm the governor, we was with the governor at the NAACP dinner, she spoke there, and it was really wonderful to hear from her. All of these women are dedicated to transparency in the government. I want to just talk a little bit about them. The State Attorney General Nassel has promised Michigan residents to give the Department of the Attorney General back to the people that it serves. Now, if you're going to give it back, who had it? You understand? The Michigan Attorney General is currently conducting public hearings and investigations, and her investigations are transparent. That's what she emphasized. And she's investigating the Catholic Church, the clergy abuse, the Flint Water Crisis, and also the incident that happened at Michigan State. At that meeting in Midland, when I met with her, she pointed out to us that Michigan is one of the least, most transparent governments in the country. Only one, I think, in Louisiana, small town in Louisiana, that may be equal to us in terms of not being transparent. The governor and his administration has exempted themselves from the Freedom of Information Act. And Nessel, when asked about that, she said, "Look, I took no public money for that reason. I serve no one but the people of this state. So we need to know where you get your money and how you do it." They are committed to transparency. Our governor, who is also a wonderful person, and if you look at her website and the things that she's talking about doing, she put together the most diverse cabinet in the state's history, and has signed executive directives to clean up our drinking water, indiscrimination in state government based on sexual orientation and gender identity, secured equal pay for equal work, and expanded opportunities for small and disadvantaged businesses. This is what she's already done. If she could have the legislation working with her, there's a lot that she can accomplish. She is also committed to transparency. That's not much, that much different from me and other people in this state have watched us going the way that we went and wanted something done about it. They were observing it, and now they're in a position to do something.
Your time is up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we are at the remarks of council.
And today, we will be starting with councilmember Scherzer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to say thank you to everyone that came to tonight's meeting, as well as those listening at home on SGTV, to our speaker, or our public speakers. We appreciate you taking the time to come out and bringing your concerns, and I would just want to encourage more people to come and voice their opinions or bring things to the city. We want to hear from you, and we appreciate it. I just want to cover a couple of things coming up in the community. Just a reminder that on the 24th, we have the Business Plan Writing Workshop hosted by the SEDC, right here in council chambers, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's a free event, so if you're interested in starting a business or learning how to write a business plan, please come out and support and attend this event. November 3rd, the Saginaw Zetas and the NAACP are hosting the November Community Forum at Tabernacle Baptist Church at 3:00 p.m., and our topic is economic development in Saginaw. So if you are out and you have time, please come by Tabernacle. And Kynna Franklin is going to, from the SEDC, is going to be speaking, as well as Rachel Trumbull from the SVRC Marketplace. So that's November 3rd at 3:00 p.m., Tabernacle. And lastly, I just want to wish everyone a happy Halloween. Please be safe out there and check your candy, and make sure you understand and know that the trick-or-treating times are between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. So, other than that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, councilmember Bench.
Thank you. I'd like to thank our public speakers coming here tonight. McCulick, thank you for putting the effort to be here again. I want to congratulate the two young Eagle Scouts who have since gone home. And other than that, I think I will pass.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to also thank our guests tonight, especially those that spoke up. In terms of the glass recycling, I've also heard that people are super sad about it, and that they tried to drop off some recyclables in Midland, but that I hear that that's only for Midland residents, and they're checking. And so I also think that it would be really wonderful if we had an alternative, but unfortunately, just as far as I know, there's no money in it, so there's nobody that wants to do it. And so if we decide that we want to get someone to take it, we're going to have to pay them for it. So maybe that's something that we can learn more about, but I certainly appreciate you bringing it up. And then in terms of go-karting, I know that city staff will reach out to you about that, but I was also thinking maybe Saginaw County Parks and Rec would know, so with your permission, I'd like to pass your information to them, to reach out to you directly. I hope that's okay, staff. And then one last thing. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to go door-to-door with the Michigan Labor Council to get the word out about the permanent absentee voter list. Being on this list means that voters can avoid the lines and will be reminded of every election. The way it works is that once voters request to be added to the permanent absentee voter list, they will be sent an automatic request for absentee ballot before every election. And when that's filled out and returned, the clerk's office will send them a ballot in the mail for them to fill out at their leisure. And to request to be added to the absentee voter list, just call the clerk's office at 759-1482 and ask for it. The next chance to go door-to-door will be this Saturday, October 26th, at 10:30, leaving from the CWA Hall at 1614 Marshawn, if anyone would like to join. That's all, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Ostasch.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody, and happy fall. I hope you've been enjoying some of the great weather that we had over the weekend, although it changed a little bit today. Just a few things I've got here. So again, I just want to pitch for something that's coming up through Delta College, which I am co-chairing, and it's called The Chocolate Affair. And it's a great program, because what they do is they get students in the sixth grade, and then they mentor them all the way through high school, and then the goal is to get these students into a college program. What's nice about the program now, and that's why we have a big fundraiser, is there's now money available for scholarships, so there's like a $2,000 scholarship that the kids can be awarded. So that's November 7th. It's at the Great Hall of Valid Plaza in Midland, and there's information on that on my Facebook page, and also if you need to, my phone number and stuff is there, feel free to call if you need more information on that. Excuse me again. Just some things that are happening in the neighborhood and the town over the weekend. Actually, coming up this weekend, I think they still have tickets, is they're through the Saginaw Chamber, through the Youth Preservation Network, they're having a Halloween Charity Bash Ball at the Saginaw Country, or Saginaw Club here in town, so that's $30, and there's drinks, and it's a cash bar, food, and stuff like that. So that is happening as well, from 8:00 to 11:30. And also, I was reading in the newspaper, I just want to say, welcome to Shoemakers, who is coming to Old Town Saginaw, so they'll be taking over the old stable ski shop there. So welcome to them, and welcome to the Old Town Historic Business District. That is one of our local historic districts. We just given a piece of paper here, too, so I just want to give a congratulations to the Adams Boulevard Neighborhood Association area. Looks like there's going to be some new trees tomorrow morning, starting to be planted along the boulevard. So it's always interesting to see what you do there all throughout the year, from Christmas decorations to birdhouses to pumpkins now at all timeframes. So congratulations on that as well.
Thank you.
Also, too, with our arson watch program, there is a meeting, I understand, this Wednesday at Central Fire Station, noon?
Noon.
Noon, thank you. And also, if there's anybody in the community that's still looking to volunteer for this group, I've heard there is still some opportunity, and you can get ahold of even, like the Beacon Hope Church, Zion Lutheran Church, Houghton Jones Resource Center, those are some of the areas where the food and basically the hub of this program is going to be. I plan to be at the Houghton Jones area throughout the night at certain times, too, so that will be coming up. And then also, just a little bit, too, from our speaker, one of our speakers, Salem, I just want to make, just kind of reach out, you talked about our state government and some of the transparency and some of the things they're doing, and one of the things I was just reading in the newspaper, it was in the Metro Times, that Attorney General Nessel is working on, and I think this is really great, and this is really needed, because now that marijuana is legal in the state of Michigan, she's working on a program to expunge 235,000 people that are now serving that should not be for something. So thank you, I went over a little bit.
I have to catch you off.
Okay, got it. Done.
Well, councilman, you got to rest my time.
I'll reclaim my time.
It doesn't quite work that way. But go ahead, councilman.
I'd like to thank all the citizens for being here today to see what's going on in the City of Saginaw, and to help us make Saginaw the way you want it to be. I really have a lot to say today, but I would like to say that the UAW strike, it seemed like it's nearing close, coming to an end. The members get to vote on it this week, and I guess they will know later on Friday if they pass it or not, but it seems like it's going to pass. As a UAW member myself, and a ex-genderal motor worker, because I work for Next Year now, I don't like seeing temporary workers, but you know, that's part of the process, I guess, you know. I would hate to think that anybody here would have a temporary job, you know, doing what you're doing every day, because we sure don't have temporary bills, we don't have temporary children, we don't have temporary cars. So, you know, I hope that maybe they get a good contract next time, so they all can be permanent workers, because it makes the city a better place to be in when you've got permanent workers here in the City of Saginaw. Councilman Moore is not here, and I know for a fact that her and County Commissioner Sheldon Matthews is doing a trunk-or-treat at the Sheridan Food Market on the 23rd of this month. So I guess that would be in two days. So I just want everybody to know that they can bring their kids out to get some treats. Another reason why we need good healthcare, you know. You got to have a dental plan, too, so I think that's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Millen.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I'm going to start by recognizing some individuals. On Friday, the Saginaw County Chamber of Commerce held the Community Service Awards, and I'm not going to go into the details, they were well-publicized, but the individuals, Larry Preston, Bob Vandevenner, Tom Brayley, Dick Garber, and Jeff Opperman were all recognized for their contributions to our community. And I just want to say, these are our partners when we build community here. Some additional kudos last week were given to our Mayor Pro Tem, Brenda Moore. The Saginaw County Board of Commissioners recognized her for being the first black female president of the Michigan Municipal League, adding to the list of recognition she's gotten. And one other individual, I just wanted to note the passing of former Police Lieutenant Charles Duncan, served 31 years on the force here, and he was well-known in the community, owner and founder of Duncan Outdoor Shop, which is over in Bay City now, so that was, his funeral was yesterday. I wanted to mention something about our Public Works Convenience Station. Wanted to mention something about our Public Works Convenience Station. We had our convenience station open after our last council meeting. They receive over 200 yards of debris and people's items they don't want anymore, and I wanted to say that some of that is from people doing work on their houses here, their roofing projects, cleaning their own yards up, and I think it shows the commitment of improving Saginaw from our citizens. And it reminds me of a sore spot when we get illegal dumping. There's a location near Carlisle and Ninth Streets, and the last time I stopped by there, someone's illegal dumping included two recycling containers from Buena Vista Charter Township. And I just think that's disrespecting our citizens' efforts for neighboring. If they'll do better, we're going to try and continue to do better. And that's my comments.
All right, thank you. I think it's back to me now. First of all, I want to, Ms. McCulich, I would suggest you might want to concentrate your efforts on the idea of increasing recycling overall among our citizens. Focusing on glass that can't be accepted now really won't help us, but if you focus on getting more people to do recycling of what is accepted, in the long run, that will serve your purpose, because more people, when it, when those items are now accepted, will be in the habit of recycling anyway. So that would be my suggestion. Mr. Collins, you, there are some state laws that deal with using off-road vehicles on streets and parks, and I might steer you to those to take a look. And Mr. Manon, thank you for your update regarding the state officers. The, I want to follow up on Councilmember Forbes' mention, well, I guess the idea of the recycling overall is what you were talking, and I think that is what I would encourage. Back to that. The, and I want to follow up on Councilmember Oztas' suggestion that there is still some need for people, what the volunteers, I believe, they need are drivers and ride-alongs. And if you're interested, those would be the ones you can contact and make an offer. I do want to mention Saginaw Promises. Saginaw's Got Talent is tomorrow, October 22nd, at SASSA. Between 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. is the preview of art, science, career development, displays, and refreshments, and 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. is the onstage talent. Anyone interested, please follow up. Saginaw Promise is doing many good things for the city and the school district. The Saginaw Promise is also doing the Power of a Promise, Promise Two, on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2019, at Horizon's Conference Center. The main event is between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m., and the biggest thing is the guest speaker will be Magic Johnson. So if any of you have a desire to mix with tall people, this is your opportunity. Tall and a great basketball player. So please do support both the Saginaw Power of a Promise and the Saginaw's Got Talent, because they're both in support of Saginaw's Got Promise to all our students in the city. The last, the, Saginaw's Last, Adams Boulevard Tree Planting, they are inviting everyone to attend. So if you're interested in seeing a lot of trees planted in the city on this date, please check out Adams Boulevard. And last, Michigan Teen Challenge, annual fall banquet, October 24th at 5:30 p.m., Horizon's Conference.
Mayor, we are now at reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you. And regarding recycling, I would say as well that the, we collect it, if you recall, we changed our collection some years ago, so we collect it internally. If we hadn't done that, the cost for our annual rubbish bill would be significantly higher now, and if the authority has the contract for the processing, which is where told what plastics and glass, et cetera, are accepted, there is a resolution, they voted unanimously to switch to this, which is going to, I think, keep costs in line, so that it didn't increase this year with the decline. But even if they hadn't done that, even for the reduced collection, it probably would have been a higher cost. So they are working to reduce that, but I think they'll also be looking, they have a few more years left on these contracts, but they'll be looking to see if we can do some regional things in the future, potentially, maybe with Midland or Bay City, and it could probably be more efficient if there were a regional collection area, but we'll have to see if that is economically feasible at this point. Right now, there isn't one in this area, but something that they're looking at. Also, I would say, congratulations to the recipients of the fireworks ceremony a few weeks ago, especially firefighter of the year David Gallagher. And as Councilman Millen mentioned, the Chamber Awards were last week, and a number of them are still doing a lot of good work in the city, so I thought those were really good to see and hear about. Some of the things Larry Preston did mention, they'll be having some new programming at the Temple Theater on gospel music, which was also interesting that he announced that at the meeting, so I think there will be a lot more offerings there, trying to get a broader audience. With those awards, and talking to some of the department heads, I also, so we have some awards in the city, but we don't do overall city awards, so I just want council to take a moment and recognize all of our employees that do a great job. And we do hear about public safety a lot in police and fire, but if we don't have employees providing clean water to the city, that's a major public health issue. And in fact, mostly countywide, they provide clean drinking water. If we don't have inspectors that are inspecting boilers and water heaters correctly, it can lead to disastrous conditions. So I think we should recognize all the employees every day that do great work for the city. In one of those employees, Scott Nazinski did, came up with a great concept, Saginaw's Best Kept Yard, and they had that award presented last week, I believe, to the grand prize winner, Phyllis Lowe. Congratulations to her as well, and thanks to Scott for coming up with that program and also continuing to do it. Also, I wanted to mention that we have a program that the police put together that I think is really interesting and beneficial to the businesses in the city, and they are working with Stars now. The police department does active shooter training, and now they've also been working with, I believe it's Covenant Hospital, to add Stop the Bleed component. So they are doing that training at businesses throughout the city, so if there's someone that's interested in that, I believe they're doing a whole security review at Stars as well. And they've done it here at the city, and we are having training for our employees, again, by the individuals for that. So if you ever come in contact with a business that's looking for something like that, steer them to Chief Ruth, or Lieutenant Krajorski, or Bell can assist with that as well. And finally, last week, I did talk about the Big Brothers and Big Sisters Building. I met with Scott Lidle again about that, so we're going to try to assist with that current building that they have. As I mentioned, it's much too large for what they need, and it seems to be cost-prohibited for any rehab of the building, but we're going to work with them on that building and also try to help them with some of the potential office space in the city, because our biggest goal is to keep that office in the city, and I think they're receptive to that. So we'll do what we can to help them locate that and also take care of that building. I mentioned it is similar to the Junior Achievement Building. They own the building, but it's on city property, so it was a long-term lease. They can turn the building back to the city in any event, anyway, but we'll do what we can to help out with keeping them in the city. With that, that concludes the management update.
Thank you. And I just, for the record, I do agree with you that we need to recognize all employees all the time. We have really exceptional employees, so I think that's an excellent suggestion. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are now at the consent agenda.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV Channel 191. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk to the consent agenda items?
Number nine, that's when I asked the question, on number nine.
Okay, number nine, any other exceptions? Any other exceptions? Hearing none, is there a motion to proceed with the remainder of the consent agenda items?
So.
Support. It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried, Madam Clerk.
Okay, number nine, approve to increase the purchase order with American Excavating Incorporated by $33,000 for a new total of $192,587 for the Anderson Splash Park repairs, and further approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2020 to recognize these funds. Councilmember Walls.
I understand that the, we got to spend up to $100,000 of fixing, and insurance going to take over to the rest of that?
That's correct.
Because it's obvious something they didn't do right, the various contractors, or?
No, I mean, the low bid, what happened was, is the original quote didn't include sealing the entire surface. So, long story, we were going to do some kind of epoxy or different kind of sealing, but we didn't have the ceiling including any original quote. So we worked with the insurance company to make sure they agreed to allow us to add it before we added it to the project, and they did. So this additional amount is going to be 100% covered by the insurance company.
Another question was, do that, do it take care, do the splash park take care of itself? I mean, as we, do we, is it a revenue thing, if the city of Saginaw?
It's a, no charge, you know, so it's, there's no fee, it's open to the public.
Oh, is really?
Yep.
Yeah, that was, the park was built with a lot of DNR grant funds, and part of using DNA grant funds means that it has to be open to the public.
Okay, okay. I just want to know.
Okay.
Is there a motion on number nine?
It is, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve number nine.
All right, it's been moved and zero second. It's been supported, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, next order, Businesses' Boards Commission Committee Reports.
Are there any reports of city boards and commissions? Anybody? You've got to start getting some reports. Yes, Councilmember Millen?
There was an MBS International Airport Commission meeting last week, and we completed our review of the airport manager, and it was moved that he receive a raise. We were very satisfied with his work, and we hope to have him continue there. And we received the second new snow-removal equipment for the airport. So if they ever, if they have a public opportunity to show those, they are a massive machine, they're 70 feet long, 48 feet wide, I think, when they are operating. So two of them together, I think, can clear an entire runway's width. And that's a report from the Airport Commission.
All right. Any other boards or commission reports? Anybody? All right, none?
Mr. Mayor, I do have something to ask about the commissions.
Good, yes, what do we got?
I haven't had the opportunity to serve them, because I work, you know, and the one that I was on, the promise zone, they'd meet during the day, and I can't make it, you know, my employer won't let me out for those meetings. So if there are any other committees or commissions that we see fit, I may be able to work on during the evening, please let me know.
I think, Madam Clerk, would you be able to help Councilmember Walls on that?
I will, I'll see what's open or available, and I'll let you know.
Even if it may not be open, let him know in the future what might be available, and then?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, Madam Clerk.
We are now at appointment of board and commission members.
We do.
We have one tonight, and it's a council appointment of Christina Jones to the Board of Appeals on zoning, with a term to expire December 31st, 2022.
This has been on the agenda, is there any, is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried, Madam Clerk.
We are now at resolutions. Our first one is to recognize Midwest Hahno Cultural Entertainment as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried.
Our second resolution is approving the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority's agreements with American Waste Incorporated and the WM Recycle America LLC.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, carried. Now, Clerk.
Mayor, you are now in miscellaneous business.
And there is an item I wish to bring up, and that's that there is a public safety millage, which is due to expire December 31st of 2020 for the current five-year period. This is the city's public safety millage, and we need to decide about a ballot proposal on renewing that millage. So we want to bring it for council to, for discussion on when, if council agrees, when we would put that on the ballot. Comments, thoughts, discussion?
Well, yes, my first question would be, the lead time needed from its passage to have it show up on the proper tax bills. And secondly, for any discussion we're going to have, if the clerk and the manager could provide us which election dates next year it would be eligible to be on. There's three different elections at least next year.
I think the clerk has that information now, is that correct?
Yes, I do. March 10th is the presidential primary. If you choose to do it by then, your deadline for ballot language would be December 17th. The August 4th primary is scheduled for election, and November 3rd, general election is scheduled. And you have an option of a May election, that would be a special election.
And ballot language due dates on those last two?
I have them, but not with the?
Oh, okay, okay. The immediate concern would be if you wanted it on March 10th, we would have to act quite quickly.
And I believe any of those dates, it doesn't matter for the passage as long as it's passed before it expires.
Okay.
Correct.
So, thoughts? There are at least three, maybe four, items on the ballot already that are ballot increases or renewals for March 10th. If we wish to go on that date, we would be alongside other, other public safety ballot proposals, so that's something that we need to be aware of. But if we wait, it gives us less chances, so those are the two issues to weigh. Councilmember Walls.
I would like to know, politically speaking, when do the, those type of millages pass the easiest? I mean, I want to put it out there, when we normally have days when they don't pass.
Councilmember Forbes?
I think that there's, there's some reasoning about that perhaps in a primary, there's a lower turnout, but that those voters tend to be very loyal voters and very informed about what's going to be on the ballot. And this is something that won't get a ton of attention, like a presidential election, for example, and so I think that's why we have so many millages on the primary ballot this year. So there's some logic to go for a primary. It's all really up in the air, though.
There is some logic to go on earlier, if the event that it fails, you have more opportunities to try again. So there's countervailing concerns here.
Was that a best for the city, that's what I want to see.
We don't have to decide today, because we have at least two more meetings, but to get, but we do need to be thinking of ballot language if we were going to get it on the March 10th. Did we have, the former ballot language, is that, did that be presented to the council members, so we'd have that before the next meeting?
Sure, yes.
That would be a good place to start. And this would be, I assume, Mr. Manager, we're only asking for renewal, as I understand, not for an increase?
Correct.
All right. Which is an important factor for both us and the public.
I guess that's up to you, but we are recommending.
Right, which I understand, we're not asking now, the staff is not asking for an increase. It only funds, you think you said, a minimum number of positions?
30.
30 positions?
Correct.
Out of our entire police and fire force, so understand that it's not paying for the entire police and fire force, and that's why 60% of our general fund budget is still used for police and fire. This is only a supplemental. It's not enough to cover everything by any means. It'd be great if we could get more, but we're not asking for that. Any questions or other comments on this item?
If we're seeking the manager's guidance on some of this, it would be nice to know what statutory limits there might be on this. Were we to ask for an increase, are we at our limit with? Are we at our limit with seven and a half already, combined with other millages we have that are outside the general fund?
I don't think we have the answer, but I believe we can be provided that answer by the next meeting again.
Right, that's what I say.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any other questions counsel might have before we make a decision?
You know, I was thinking the other day, you know, what the hospital is doing by paying for policemen, you know, and even a dog now.
They're doing four.
Yes. The thought that crossed my mind some time ago that maybe we might want to seek the same agreement with maybe some other businesses around town. Maybe the civic center might want to do something. Maybe, you know, different areas might want to, you know, pay for police to be like, maybe the downtown authority might want to have designated police in the downtown authority. So, just a thought that crossed my mind, I don't know.
We actually do, most businesses prefer to have overtime contracts. So, we have a number of overtime contracts in the city. Primarily, it is through the DDA, or the Old Town Business Association has done it in the past, but that's typically what they do, so they may want additional officers Friday and Saturday nights for six hours instead of paying for the full cost of one. Covenant's a little bit unique in that, and I don't think there's too many in the, in the state even that do that, unless they, unless it's a local unit that contracts with the sheriff's department. But we're always open to contracting like that.
Okay, thank you. Just a matter of finding someone interested. Yes, Councilmember Forbes?
Some information that I might be interested in was, there was some recent rules changes about how much information we can give up to a certain date, and then it's my understanding there's like six days where you can't speak about a particular ballot initiative.
That, there was a.
The gag order, I believe, was set aside by an injunction through court system. But the Michigan Campaign Finance Rules would still apply to any sort of.
Which maybe perhaps you could give us the highlights on that for the next meeting as well.
Yeah, I can, I'll resend the bad opinion through the.
That'd be helpful, yeah. Anything else for the topic? Anybody else, any questions? All right, that's all I had for miscellaneous. Does anyone else have any other miscellaneous motions or business? Hearing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Oh, second, move to the second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.